I was talking to this lady who's been one of those call people for the tracking and tracing.
Oh.
And, um, in her opinion, the restaurants and stuff are going to get shut down again. And I'm like, I don't see that happening, not around here. But she was from Buffalo area. And I'm like, I don't see that happening.
One thing I saw last night, that just typical how the state can be, is we know on August 9th, the Canadian border is gonna be opening for us to go that way. But one of the many things that they require is a negative COVID test 72 hours prior to crossing. Okay? So Sue's, you know, because we're going, and Sue's looking around for where do we get these testing? Well, during COVID, they had free COVID testing at the hospital down in Watertown, which is about 30 miles to the border. And I'm sure there's places like that all along the United States and Canada. Our effing state had decided that they're gonna, you know, statewide, no more of that. And I'm thinking, how should you all, um, okay, someplace down in New York City, you could say that. But this is near the border, so 72-hour thing is important, it's a requirement that, you know, if you're having to go further and further field, that's just clueless on the reality of other parts of the state, ours in particular.
So there's no place in Watertown up on the hill, there's no place that's doing COVID testing?
They shut that one down, didn't they?
Yeah. It's just-
What about that urgent care center?
Nope. Nope. It's, it's, whatever, look, it's, it's a requirement that they're putting in place. I mean, it's our government, their country, they can, you know, but so we have to deal with it. But how somebody down in Albany wouldn't know that to say that perhaps instead of, because it's our money, because the state was subsidizing these places to have these clinics, we're gonna stop paying, even though it continues to be necessary.
The speakers are on. Okay. Can anybody check out their phone, just make sure it's working?
You got it, Ron?
I think, but if we could verify with somebody's phone, that'd be great.
I can never find it on my phone.
I never, I have great, I don't know why, it used to be able to find it easy. I don't know why I can't find it anymore.
Tentative meeting with Dave Morocco at Bonnie Castle Stables on Saturday. I'll notify everybody as to what time.
Okay, you only have two people there, right?
No.
It's not working?
We, no, 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 to your question, you can only have two people there. I've been reading that, that handbook, and we can all be at any place. We just can't-
Take action.
-take any actions or do anything, so we can all be there.
I have to notice, I put it on the front door, it's still there. It says that.
Now, where do you go once you-
I can't, it used to be real easy to get to.
I know. Where's Susan, can she check?
Easy. I find all the old ones, but-
All right, me too.
Not loving here, John, must be sloping that way.
Government.
It used to be that, that link, you know, would show right up.
Livestream, there we go. Think I might have found it. Is today?
Hello?
Yeah, would you check and see for a livestream in here?
Well, I was trying to, and when I clicked on the livestream, it goes just to the old videos. So I had just downloaded, or I just shut my phone down and back on again to see if it would work. So I'll check it and, um, or you want me to send them emails to somebody, or?
Yeah, send it to somebody.
Yeah, all right. Because it's not on right now, but I can find, but I'll check now that my phone's turned back on.
Yep.
Okay, bye.
Yeah, I'm just seeing the old one.
If you can see us on that screen moving and live there.
Uh, we've got this.
As we're recording.
Yes, no question. Just one more.
I think I got it. All right, I got us all, man.
No, that's all I got, you know.
Yeah, I can't get it either. They say it's recording.
Okay.
So we are live?
We're recording, we don't know if we're live.
I have no idea if we're live. Okay, uh, town board meeting for August 3rd at 9:00 a.m. Uh, I'd like to call that town board meeting to order, but everybody please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and justous.
Okay, the first item I have on the agenda is, I put, you all see the hiring notice that's on our website? That was just put on our website. Um, you also see an application that we have from an employee, from a, from a person that's interested in a job for a year-round full-time job. This person would work at the transfer site, and this person would work at the arena and basically be a DPW person. He's worked for the Village of Alexandria Bay for about six or seven years. Uh, and I met with him yesterday. Uh, we're gonna have to discuss the wage amounts also. Everybody doesn't know Byron got hurt on Friday night at home, and Jamie and Jerry have kicked, stepped in immediately as they did, and took care of the transfer site on Saturday and Sunday and on Monday. Uh, I don't know anymore about, I've tried to call Byron three times, I haven't got a hold of him. I think, I think Jamie stopped over to see him and said he's in rough shape. As everybody knows, we don't know what's going on with Byron as far as, we've talked to him about retiring. He's changed his retiring date a couple of times. Uh, so we've got a lot of unanswered questions, uh, in relation to that situation. It's busy up there, I, I think we need to hire somebody, and this person can fill in at the, at the rank and with the DPW, uh, if he's not gonna be at the transfer site. We'll have another issue if Byron doesn't come back to work and decides to retire now, which that's been told me that that may happen, um, because then this person that we hired is gonna have to be the new full-time person at the transfer site, which he's fine with doing that, but that still leaves us, uh, the other position that we'll deal with later.
So how soon will this, I mean, this person's-
He'd have to give Jared his two weeks notice, he told me yesterday. Uh, Byron's at 1683 an hour, this guy is making 17 at the-
Seventeen twenty-two.
Is it, okay. So we have to, uh, figure out what we do there.
I would hate to see the deputy make more than the boss, that being, but-
Yep.
But we've done in the past, we have people start off with a salary, and then after a probation period, it becomes a different salary, so-
Right.
And it would, and taking the next step further is, um, pay raises that we have are annual in January. So here we are in, in August, the eighth month, so it's only four, but it's not, not six months, but it's close enough to kind of say that, is, um, it would seem to me that we, say we hired him at, say, 1650, and then come January, when the annual pay raises happen anyways, we bring him up to a number, what he's currently doing right now. And by that time, um, Byron will get a pay raise, so he'll continue to make more than his deputy. That's just my thoughts. And if he's willing to go, this individual is willing to go along with that too.
Well, I just did, I just did 1675, uh, and then a 3% raise at first of the year would bring him to 1725. So that falls in pretty close to those numbers. At 1675 hiring him now, which would have him be a little bit below Byron.
Yep.
Uh, and then he would be back to his old, uh, close to his existing wage, uh, at first of the year. And also Byron would be above that.
Do we know all the benefits compared?
I'm sorry, what?
How do the benefits compare, the town versus the village?
It's, uh, it's the New York, it's the New York State or-
Same thing.
It's the same retirement system. So, uh, and then he would have to go to our insurance versus the town and the village's insurance, and I don't know anything about the village's insurance. But he was, he's on, I do know that he's on a two-person policy. That brings Byron's wage to 1733, so that keeps Byron above this hired person.
So you're proposing to hire this person at 1675, is that what you're saying?
That's the numbers that-
No.
Come the closest to where we're, what we're talking about. The one thing that I'm wondering is, uh, we just, I just put this hiring notice on the website. Do we need to let more time go?
No. Byron couldn't not come back at all, you know, we can't, we can't expect to, you know, Jay and Jamie and Jerry to rotate through there, that's just not-
Well, we've advertised for a laborer in the past and haven't had much success.
No, I haven't, no, I thought most, yeah.
Right.
Yep.
And I, I was on the website a few days ago at least, and, and there was a hiring notice there. So we've had it on there, um, and we normally keep things on file. I think what has bit us in the butt is we had a very good employee that we hired for the transfer site this year, and he left because we couldn't give him enough. He wanted full-time, and, and I think that's where, that's what keeps biting us in the butt, is you're not gonna get a part-time person up there, or part-time in general. People who wanna work either wanna work full-time. If they wanna work part-time, they're not gonna work every weekend, which is when we really need them. So we need to do the full-time, and you've got somebody, and so I don't see the reason for waiting, um, because there are gonna be other, if something does happen to Byron, or, yeah, Byron, there will be another position coming open soon, so you leave the notice on there and, and continue looking for other applicants also. But you've got somebody that's, that's willing to come. He will initially take, you know, for a few months, take a pay cut if he's willing to do that.
On top of all that, it's a job that not a whole lot of people wanna do.
Right.
Everything I'm hearing, this guy-
This guy is-
Would wanna do that.
Has said that he would like to do it, right?
Yep.
But there's also tips involved up there.
Yep.
Reality, so it may not be a pay cut.
But then how many people, at the end of the day, wanna work out of that?
No.
And we have somebody.
Transfer state.
Well, but-
Now, I understand what you're saying.
I'm just saying, this is, this is a situation that we can't let go by again.
And I even thought that if we decide to hire this gentleman this morning, then I would get ahold of him and ask him, and ask him if he wants to work.
Part-time?
Weekends.
Yeah.
First two weeks.
For that, for that two week, yeah.
I make a motion that we hire him at 1675.
I'll second it.
Do we, and what about the raise? What about the first year?
Well, it's a new year, I mean-
Well, in line with everybody else.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
That's our house.
So, motion by Ron, uh, second by Sandy to hire Bill Brown at, did I get that name right? Bill Brown, at 1675 an hour.
How old's he?
Huh?
Can we ask, how old is he?
Yeah, we're supposed to ask, yeah.
We are?
No, but he's got longevity with the village, he's been there for quite a while. It's not, he doesn't seem to be a, a job jumper, I mean, he's been there seven years.
I mean, he's not 62, getting ready to retire?
He lives in Clayton, no, I'm not one of them, if I had to guess his age, I'd say he's-
He's younger than us. That's all you needed to say.
Everybody is.
We can't say that to you, we can say that to us.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Well, I'm the youngest one here, so.
By far.
Okay, so that's all we need to know.
Okay, so any further discussion? And everybody's okay with me talking to him, let's see if we-
Absolutely.
I know he's gonna give a two-week notice to Jared, um, and we'll see with that. So all those in favor, if you can find by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, none, okay? And the next one is, is this about the EDUs? Um, I'm just looking at the ones after that, uh, because I think we're gonna be in this EDU subject for a while.
Yeah, maybe skip ahead.
We have to do, uh, we gotta get going on a budget session, so I'm already saying here that we can adjourn this meeting to a workshop for this Thursday or this Friday. Um, I'm gonna be gone for four days next week, which you guys can still have meetings and do everything that you gotta do or wanna do. Uh, but I'm suggesting possibly Thursday or Friday, everybody can think about that and look at their schedules. Um, Nicole's been working quite a bit on the budget, we've, she and I have been talking about a lot of different items on the budget, um, and one thing that she likes to do is she likes to plug in the raises, uh, for the non-union employees, so that she's got an idea where wages are at.
That doesn't lock us in in any-
No, definitely does not lock us in, no.
Just give us that number to play with.
And not only that, but just think about this before we talk too much about it, because we usually have been trying to keep the raises between the non-union and the union, uh, equal. We had a situation two years ago where it got off, everybody remembers that discussion.
Right, but that was a different circumstances.
So if we were to determine a raise level now that we're talking about, that raise level could influence the Teamsters negotiations.
Oh.
So if everybody just wants to think about it a little bit and not come out with a particular number right now, uh, I think we need to think about it and then, uh, express what we're, talk to Nicole about what we're thinking about. Okay? Um, and I already mentioned about Bonnie Castle, I had a conversation with Mr. Morocco yesterday, and, uh, he's willing to take care of the items that he put together that are all part of the door up there, which is a lot of, which is a bunch of 55-gallon drums and so on. He's willing to finish that. He took 11 dumpsters out of there of everything you can imagine. I did go up there after he did that, and that back building that was, had a tremendous amount of stuff and it had a little bit of stuff left. Uh, but I think everybody needs to see this thing. As, as Sandy said earlier, I put a notice on the door a while ago. We can meet and be together, we just can't take any action. So everything that I understand, we could meet up there on Saturday.
What time?
Well, I'm asking.
It's gotta be morning.
Morning, yeah.
I, really, it's gotta be according to what Dave Morocco, what his schedule is, but I think maybe you know.
So you're gonna let us know?
Yeah. And, but I'd like to have an idea from everybody, probably everybody would like to do this somewhat early in the morning at nine or 10 o'clock, right?
Six would be nice.
Yep, nine's better than-
Huh?
Six? I said, six would be nice.
So I'll talk to him about nine or 10 o'clock, and I'll get back to you all, okay?
Got it. If he wants to go earlier, if he wants to go earlier, that's another problem, like eight.
I'm not sure if he's coming up Friday or he's coming up Saturday for this. I asked him about if he was coming up Friday, and, uh, he wasn't sure.
Well, let him pick, pick the time, let us know.
Yep. Yep. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell him nine or 10 o'clock and see if that works with his schedule, and I'll get back to you all.
Okay.
Okay? And that's, that's all I have.
That was the workshop for Thursday or Friday.
Yep. What, uh, what's everybody's schedules look like?
I don't, uh, I don't have anything, so.
I don't think I have anything this week, so Thursday or Friday would be good. Next Thursday, we've got the Teamsters.
I have a meeting on Thursday at 3:00 in the afternoon. And I have a meeting with Alpine Fence at the playground in Redwood at noon on Friday.
Morning's better for me in both days. Early's a better.
So we could do a-
Six o'clock?
So we can do a 9:00 meeting on Thursday or Friday, which day is, if everybody want, anybody want?
Thursday, yeah.
You wanna do Thursday in the event that we wanna come right back and do it again Friday?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. I guess it depends on a couple of things, it depends on, do you think that we're gonna be able to get through this EDU thing today?
No, 100%, no. I think what we were originally supposed to be here for was the introduction of the new ordinance for Route 12. But I think the consensus has been, we don't want to do just one ordinance, we'd rather have them all. So what we need to look at right now is the ordinances as a whole, which a part of that is your EDU chart. But we don't wanna change just the chart and then have other things need to be changed too. So what we need to focus on today is our, in our working session, is our ordinances as a whole, what exactly needs to be changed, and part of that is EDU counts. But there's some other things that I think need to be addressed.
Like, like saying like this, you have this EDU chart, you know, like single-family dwelling one, you know, so it's just a generic thing that can be applied toward any district. And then, then you'll have another, uh, uh, part of the ordinance that will, that'll be specific to wherever, whatever district you happen to be in when you multiply. You take that chart and apply it towards all the properties in that district. What I did, you know, I, I transcribed the Route 12 water district ordinance. Um, it's very similar to Route 12, um, County Bay, um, maybe one, I don't know if it's Redwood, but anyway, those ones are very similar, um, outer streets are a little bit different, but, but I could send it to everybody, and you could look at, well, well, I think it's just a really good starting point, kind of real generic, and then if these stuff you, you know, you have a problem with, you know, more eyes, you know, it can't hurt if you guys, okay, you know, you wanna look at it all, or, or we'll just continue doing it, what we're doing. As endless little things, I mean, specifically calls off, for example, like all bills to be paid have to be paid to the town clerk, well, we know that doesn't happen anymore. So we went, but that could happen in the future, could have, you know, so we should kind of change that, stupid little things like that. Then they have, um, every district has the different charges for turning the water on and off, the termination, that, so it's all different cause, uh, connection to the system. If, they're all over the place, and then sometimes in this, in the ordinance, they're contradictory. And to take it a next step further, for example, like, um, if you look at Clayton, they have, their connection fee for a residential one is a thousand dollars, ours is a hundred dollars. Not saying we wanna charge a thousand dollars, but what is, you know, there should be some rationale for how you came up with a hundred, you know, with, where's it, you know, somebody came through that door and said, hey, tell me how, you know, I'm having to pay this extra money, you know, there's some number you picked out of the air, you know, there's, there's none of that, it's just, it just kind of throws it's all out there. And like I said, in some cases, it's contradictory.
Speaking of that district, Mike, do you wanna go to that meeting with me on Thursday night?
I would like to keep going on that.
At 7:00?
Yeah.
Good.
Not that I wanna, there's some things on there that, um, I think that if that district has kind of started, well, I see that is what's happened to it, like a lot of ours, is we did keep an eye on, on it, and it kind of, kind of went off it in a different, in a direction, that now it, you get further and further away from it, it's just hard to bring it back, and you can't let that happen, not again.
Yep. So that's at 7:00, and just give me a holler, give me a holler, and we'll ride up to go.
Okay, what date is that again?
It's Thursday night, 7:00.
This, this Thursday?
Yep. And one other thing that I just added to the agenda for today is that Nicole informed me that we just got a check from the Country Cottage, and they took a thousand dollars off their bill for their water usage because of, they had a leak. And I had told her when she called in December about the leak and the high usage, uh, that she claimed that it was the town of Alexandria's fault, uh, because of the hookup that the town did. And at that point in December, with cold and with snow, we weren't able to go look and see what it was. So we said we'd settle it in the spring when we turned her back on, because the, we stopped the leak by turning the water off, okay? So we turned her back on in May, April or May, Jamie did, and Jamie inspected it. And I was told by her that it was the town's fault, and so I talked to Jamie, and Jamie said, no, the leak was not the town's fault, it was the line failed at the Country Cottage. And Jamie did actually go and talk to her about that to correct her, uh, as far as that's concerned. And now we just got a check for a thousand dollars less, so if we wanna make a ruling on that, that we can't forgive any of that.
I think it goes even a little bit further, I think, I wish Jamie was here to, to verify this, but I think in our conversations, he noticed an excess water usage compared to what he, they normally have before they did, and they, he went to them and alerted them to that fact, and they, they chose to, uh, do something else, I don't know.
Yep.
But it is definitely on their side of, of the curb stop.
As far as the meter, I mean, usually from the meter end is the-
That's it.
User's responsibility.
Yep.
Where's the meter located there?
It's in a pit.
Yeah, it's in a pit.
Pit before it goes into her slab or under her slab.
Yeah.
So it's off the part of the line or something, or something?
Yeah.
So the water was shut off and it still continued to use the yard?
No, no, it continued to leak until the water was shut off.
Okay.
And we can't-
Still leaking now?
No, they fixed it.
So they found it?
Yeah.
So we're up there?
Found it in the spring.
All right. Well, I mean, but-
Well, they just told us-
How can there be a, I, I, I'm curious, they found the leak, they fixed it, how is there-
Well, barely last-
Come on, Brad. We got, you're on live here, we're at our meeting, okay? And we're talking about the Country Cottage, and one of the first questions this fan asks now is, when was the leak found, and did you notice high water readings there in the late fall? That you went to them and asked them if they knew what was going on, can you tell us the story?
Well, I, uh, I didn't find it until, um, must have been, well, when my bills come out, because I went through everybody's bill and I called them. I didn't realize it was going on in the late fall.
Are you in the building here?
I am.
Okay. Okay, come on in.
All right.
Did you hear him?
I heard that call, I was like, oh, okay.
Looking, looking at their history, so from January through March of 2020, they had, their usage was only $65. From March to July, it was 104, from July until August, it was 324. And then from, or not August, from July until October, it was 300. And then from, or not August, from July until October, it was three hundred and twenty-four dollars. From October to January, which they were getting ready to, that's when they level off, they were thirteen, thirteen.
Thirteen hundred?
Hundred.
But see, that, that's what he said, when, when he got the bills and noticed high water, I believe that's when you went and talked to them.
Yes.
Which was late last fall or last winter?
Yeah, it was, it was the end of December.
In December?
Right, and at that same time, they were, uh, closing up for the winter. So the readings after that are all zero, right up zero.
Right. Okay. Can you tell us what, in the spring, when you found the, when the leak was found and where it was and what was done?
Well, so it went through the winter, they, uh, she hired Joe-
Zipwell.
Zipwell. And, uh, the leak was underneath the building, they had to tear the cement wall out and dig, uh, probably two, three feet in, inside to get to the leak.
So there's a meter pit up there?
Yeah.
Where's the meter pit?
Meter pit's out back of the, uh, restaurant, it's probably, oh, I'm gonna say fifty feet behind the building.
So where's the water line come in on that property?
Um, it comes in on, as you're standing at the building, comes in on the left-hand side.
But it comes from Route 12?
Yes.
And it goes around the building?
Yes. Yeah. See, what they, um, what they do is, because that's built on a slab, they, um, they have to put a meter pit in. And then they tie into the old existing well line.
Oh, the old well line went out the back?
Yes, yeah.
So how, how was there, how, how is it on the town? I, I, I don't understand.
It's, it's not, because in the specs, when they, uh, hook them up, it's written in the spec book that it's tied into their old well line.
Right, so if-
It's not on us.
If the leak had been before the pit, it would've been the town's responsibility?
And it wouldn't have measured the-
At the meter?
Yeah.
Right.
Because the meter's in the pit?
Yes.
So you're verifying that the leak that you saw, you found, was after the meter pit? Where a- after the town, the town hooked to her old line?
Yes.
At the meter pit?
Right.
And the leak was, how far was the leak from the meter pit?
Well, if it's under the slab, quite a way.
Yeah.
How far?
About fifty feet.
Wow.
It was underneath, you know, it, it, it wasn't where the contractors, you know, joined it together, it was actually their line.
So when you shut the water off, they quit using water, right?
Yes.
And when you turned it on, the meters started running again?
Yes.
So it's quite obvious to me, the problem is on the other side of the meter.
Yeah, it was, yeah, underneath their building.
Did you have any discussions with the owner? Because it sounds like the owner felt it was the town.
Well, she, uh, when they were doing the repairs, she was still in Florida, so I talked to the contractor. And, you know, he, you know, he said it was the town's fault because they didn't-
He did?
Yes, because they didn't use adequate pipe to hook into the-
Well, that's, we have a number of situations like that where property owners at the time decided, just hook up to my old line. And that's just the way, we have a number of situations.
More than likely, that pipe was, whenever they built that building, it was that old.
Okay. Who found out, who realized there was a leak there first? You or her?
Me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because of the bill?
Once I seen the bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean-
She had no idea?
Yes.
Which you can understand that.
Right, no, I understand, it wasn't like, he wasn't checking on the things, he was, he, that's when you told her and then she realized, I have a problem.
Right.
So it sounds like the problem's coming because the contractor is telling her it's the town.
Yes.
And she's taking the contractor's word?
Yes.
But that's bizarre that, uh, that anything on the owner's side of the meter could be construed to be the town's problem.
Yeah, he's just, you know, what he, what he's claiming is the town should've tied in, right into their, underneath their house, which they, you can't do, you know, without, you know, disturbing the whole structure, the foundation.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, so.
Jamie, didn't the town treat everybody equally all the way up through there and tied in to their old lines?
Yes, yeah.
And, and put, in a situation like hers, they would've put a meter pit in other places too, where there was a concrete slab?
Yeah, yeah, wherever you see a-
Yeah, in no case did we, did we go directly into the house. That never happens, you always hook into their, their existing lines.
If, if you have a basement, they'll go inside and put a, a meter, you know, a meter right inside the basement. But, you know, like on a, I wanna say a double wide where they're built on a slab, there's no place to put a meter.
Okay.
So.
So you gotta put it in a pit so it's below the cross line so it doesn't freeze?
And I got a mobile homeowner, I wasn't being contested, the meter's in the pit, right?
Yes, that's how the meter-
If I'm using water and the meter's off, that's my problem, I can see that.
Yeah.
So, simple, just. They just don't wanna pay a thousand dollar bill, I understand that, but-
Who would?
But.
But, right.
I had the, that, I had the exact same situation in those apartments years ago down in the bay. The only thing, and I had to pay the water bill, and it was a horrendous leak where we couldn't find because it was in concrete under the building and rather than, and we didn't know where the lines were, so rather than tearing up the whole floor and the thing, we ended up running all new lines. The only thing that the village was willing to do to work with me is, the village's water and sewer is based on whatever water you take in goes out in the sewer. I had to pay the water portion, they looked at the sewer and said, well, because the majority of it was outside on the ground and didn't go through the sewer lines, they did make an adjustment there. But in this district, the sewer is not dependent on the water at all, it's, there's no difference.
This seems black and white, though.
It really is.
Yeah, I just-
It's unfortunate, but it is black and white.
If you take it the next step further, if we waive them paying it, it's, it's still water used by the district. So the rest of the district, well, the district members have to pick up the slack.
Right.
That's, 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 cause it's not the town, just the district.
You know, and it's, I mean, it's unfortunate, it's a double whammy on the property owner because I'm sure, I know, going through the, uh, the concrete and all of that to find the leak was not a inexpensive-
Right.
-solution. Um, I was lucky that my homeowners actually paid for a lot of it, because, I mean, it was-
Did they have to bust up concrete?
Yeah, had to break out the-
What was the leak?
The, the pipe actually split.
Alright, my, well, my, what I'm thinking is maybe when we tell her, she gotta pay a thousand bucks, also I'll say, you might wanna be doing something different, cause it's gonna happen again.
Right.
Someplace else, right?
Depending on how they fixed it.
No, I mean, the, the line is old and-
Right.
It'll be the smart thing.
You, you, you might wanna go right from the-
Yeah, the meter pit, maybe go around someplace else, we knew the whole thing, so it does not happen again.
Right.
Just kinda help them out there.
Okay.
So it's fine, I mean, is there any action the board needs to take?
I would, I would say that we, we say that we had a discussion, Jamie's explained everything to us, and that we can't waive any, any fees and that the, the bill amount is what's due. I just think we oughta make a, make a motion of board determination of that, you know, we've investigated this thing, we have the facts. We know what, what happened and how it happened and where it happened. And it's not the town's responsibility and-
I mean, it's unfortunate, but it is what it is.
We, we, we had the same, kind of the same thing happened at, um, Swan Bay, I mean. You had a water main break after the meter.
Well, they had a, the meter with the stone get stuck in it.
Yep.
And we had, and what we did, we did an estimated read and we billed them accordingly.
And they accepted that.
Who, who calls the, the customer, the water customer, tell them that?
I will.
You will?
Yeah.
You need a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion that instruct the supervisor to contact the customer, they need to pay the bill.
Okay. Need a second?
No, I'll second it.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion? I just wanted to make it clear that we've, you know, we've looked at this and we've listened to Jamie's explanation of what happened and how it happened, and it was after the town's, it was after their meter, it was not the town's responsibility. And that because of that, the owner, proprietor has to pay the bill. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Alright, maybe I'll see you at the meeting here, maybe I'll see you at noon.
Okay.
Yeah, bye.
If I could sneak a little, if it's possible, sneak one more thing in. I had a conversation with Judy Kornick, who's doing the, um, looking for grants for the Mud Lake Trail. And we had spoken at a previous town board meeting about apparently a piece of property at the Theresa End that's coming up for sale and we would like to acquire that for, make a park or something like that. And I spoke to her about that, and so she, uh, looked into it. Um, and she's gonna, like, if, if, if we would like, she'll think I'll report to us at the next town board meeting. Uh, it's one of those situations where there are some grants out there that you can, they're reimbursable. So you spend money and then, then you'll get paid back. And I don't know if that's the case with this guy specifically asked for that. This isn't one of those situations too where, um, a lot of grants, as much as you would like, when you might get it, it might take you like a year or more to actually end up with the money. And in the meantime, this guy could find another seller and sell it. And I don't know if that's something we want either, that's another topic. But, uh, if we could acquire ahead of time and they get reimbursed for it, that's, that's would be the ideal situation.
So a piece of property's come up for sale, it's a little bit over an acre, it's got five hundred and twenty-two feet of waterfront. And, uh, the price is a hundred and nine thousand dollars. And, uh, some people in Redwood that are interested in creating a, a townwide access area over there have contacted the D E C, and the D E C said that they would be interested in, in creating an access, a handicap access- Point over there. Um, through the D E C, if we were to go that route, we would have to acquire the property first and then go to the D E C, okay? Um, I sent everybody copies of the three applications that we sent to the Consolidated Funding App that Rob sent us, I don't know if anybody took a look at it, but I took a pretty close look at the one for, for the trail, for the Redwood Trail. It's a two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar grant application that we filled in, it's got boat ramp, kayak ramp, a whole bunch of things. It does not include or have anything to do with this piece of property that I'm talking to you about right now. Uh, so I just, that's just an update of where we are, what's going on over there. And I would say, I would say that we have Judy report to us.
Right, give us a report on which-
Because some of these grants, there's grants for acquisition of property, and there's grants that we gotta buy it and then we get reimbursed later.
Well, and, and she's working on other grants for just the improvement of the-
Yeah.
-the trail and various aspects of that. So it'd be, it'd be good to find out where we stand.
And I told, and I had a conversation with Judy last week, and I told her that we were looking at this, that this piece of property had come up and that we were possibly looking at that, okay? So that's, that's where we're at there.
Yep, so I would like to, her to come to the next town board meeting.
Yep.
And the property ties into our trail too, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right there, the trail.
So, the trail leads right to-
It's got the capability of a parking area.
Yeah. Cause it's right at, uh, as where Ford used to be, Jim Furman used to know that.
The Gilcrest sign, for sale sign right there.
Yeah, road, yeah.
It's got definitely a lot of flat land for a parking area, it's got access to the lake, uh, so on, so forth, of which I don't-
Nice piece of property.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. That's kinda where we're at there. And while Jamie's here, I'd like to thank Jamie, Jay and Jerry for the tremendous amount of work that it took to put that playground in. But if anybody's-
Looks great.
Gone over there and see, and I went there last night at six o'clock, and there was six kids on the playground.
That's the best part.
Running hard and moving up, climbing up and down it, and, uh, and there was two mothers sitting in their cars, parked right there at the parking spot, watching them. And I got ahold of Alpine Fence, I'm meeting them there Friday at noon, uh, to get a, a quote on a fence. Um, one of the things, if people can go over there and take a look, we might wanna fence in a lot larger area there.
I never thought about the animal situation, when he brought that up, it makes for a much more sanitary condition having, having a fence. I always thought about it, yeah.
What animal are you gonna stop? Cats can go anywhere?
Raccoons.
Raccoons can go anywhere?
Oh, okay.
I don't know, I'm just thinking myself.
Dogs.
Dogs, dogs. You keep the dog out?
Yeah.
But that's about it.
So we have two new solar lights over there, which they were solar lights that, that I had for myself, that are the streetlight style, solar lights. And, uh, so I had Jamie and Jay take them and put them up over there. And we've ordered replacements for those, and they should be in in a couple of days. But they, they light it up quite a bit, and the two that we, the ones we've ordered are more powerful than the ones that we have over there. And I went over there at eight or nine, or nine or ten o'clock last week, and it was lit up pretty well. Only one of those two was, was working, but I think the other one that they gotta-
Just guys turn it on.
They're, they got a funny deal on them about, if you want them to, you know, they'll go on it, they'll stay on all night during dark at thirty percent. And when they have movement, they go to a hundred percent. Or they'll just be a hundred percent the whole time, there's a couple of different things you can set on those. So when those ones, uh, come in, we'll get ahold of you guys, and I think we need two or three of them over there. I think that'll take care of the, something we've been talking about for six months, about putting power in over there and everything else.
I talked to Rob Campi, he, he said that there's a battery pack that needs to be replaced.
Yeah. Yeah. And he was gonna send somebody over to-
Yeah, he's got a guy coming to Redwood within a week or so.
So there's two panels on the roof and there's one light, am I right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the one light, is it underneath or is it on the end?
It's on the end.
It's on the end, facing the tavern?
The tavern, yes.
How big an area do we own there?
I think it's pretty big.
Yeah, we own.
Is that like where the old carnival used to be, the whole thing? I mean, that, that's up to you.
I mean, I saw Jerry mowing it the other day when I was over there, and Jerry's mowing it, he's mowing that whole thing.
Yeah.
And it looks nice.
Basketball courts, and boy, I think it goes past there, another hundred feet.
Footprint of property.
Yeah.
How far does it go toward you though? I mean, is there room enough there for a ball field of some kind, or anything?
Um, don't know.
Didn't there used to be a, a ball field there? Because I remember taking my kids, I mean, it was thirty years ago there, playing softball, baseball.
But that encompassed where the playground is now too. Cause that wasn't there, so.
I mean, we're looking into- We could ask Shucky for the survey of that, right?
Get that from, yeah, anybody.
Well, we should have that when Felder steeded it over to the town.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
Let's ask Shucky for a copy of that map.
A long ago.
Yeah. Okay. That's where we stand there, so I think the only thing we got left here is EDU. Discussion.
I understand you guys did a good job pinching up the dump, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, and, you know, I, I told everybody that Jamie found out at eleven o'clock on Friday night. And who was there the next morning at eight?
Me.
You were there.
Yeah, yeah. Jerry come in.
And you, did you stop and see Byron?
Uh, yesterday I did.
And he's-
He's gimping around pretty good, his leg's still bothering him, and I think his hands are bothering too. He's having surgery on his hand, I think the twenty-third, he's off for a week.
I'm sorry, what?
He's off the twenty, I think the week of the twenty-third.
Yeah.
For surgery on his hand, so.
So when I got a email, I got a phone call from Jefferson County Recycling last Wednesday. And, uh, he told me that they had picked up our recycling bin up there, the one that has all the compartments in it. And that when they emptied it, the paper bin had a lot of things in it that weren't paper. He sent me a picture of it, I printed the picture off here, uh, I was gonna take it up to, take it up to Byron and talk to Byron about it, but the deal happened on Friday, so I didn't have it. But you're aware of it, right, Jamie? And the, part of the issue here is that those recycle bins are down at the bottom of the parking lot. Byron's up at the top of the parking lot in the office and taking care of people that go to and from the trash bin.
Right.
Okay, and not with good visibility, not good visibility down there where the recycling is going on. So, uh-
What kinda stuff was in there?
Garbage.
All kinds of garbage stuff.
Garbage?
Pizza boxes, uh, beer twelve-pack holders, uh, all kinds of stuff, and this was the newspaper bin.
Is there a sign up there that says papers only, no garbage?
I think I might've even remembered seeing the guy that did that, because he had a truck full and like literally-
Kind of backed right up to the-
He had, you could tell they recycle- you could tell they recycle everything. They're one of these people that nothing goes in, in the trash and everything is recycled. So he had a big trash can and it did, it had, it had all kinds of the paper boxes and that stuff which, like the beer boxes and stuff that I break down, I put them in with the, with the cardboard. And I think he was just trying, you know, recycle everything you possibly could, cause I, I remember Byron saying, no, some of that can't go in there, cause he, he had some stuff that he asked Byron about. I think he had like some plast, a whole bunch of plastic bags, like from whatever wrapper or whatever. He wanted to throw that in with the plastics, and Byron was like, no, that can't go in there, that's just regular garbage. Um, but I, I remember seeing a person up there that literally, every, you could tell everything that came out of their house, they probably, they probably had a, you know, what's that word that I wanna call it home? For your-
Compost?
Compost. He probably composted at home, and then if it isn't compostable, it was going into one of those categories that was going in that bin.
I remember talking to Phil Reed, I didn't realize like, the cardboard, it's corrugated cardboard, you know, like when you tear it from, see the, and that's it.
Oh, so I shouldn't be putting that other stuff in there?
Stuff that, that your like, uh, uh, thirty-pack, uh, soda comes in, that's, that's garbage.
Really?
Which I-
I didn't know, I didn't-
I, no, I was surprised.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause right now, I'm actually getting quite a bit of that because they can't get bottles, so a lot of my bottles, things that I would normally have, you know, my Jenny Light, it doesn't come in bottles anymore, I have to get it in cans. So, so much of my beer has gone to cans, that I'm getting a lot of those thirty-pack things that, okay. I won't put them in, in the cardboard anymore.
Yeah, I, yeah.
So not all boxes are recyclable?
No.
No, the corrugated, corrugated cardboard. Cause the other, the other thing is, is like with the pizza boxes, pizza boxes are actually usually soiled with grease and stuff.
And that changes-
And that lowers your quality of your, of your cardboard, as far as who the guy's gonna buy it. And that's why I don't understand why it would be, probably shouldn't you take the pizza box, you should probably go in there.
Something on it can't go in.
Right. Because if you have real clean cardboard, you get a top price for it.
My, my sister-in-law is a huge recycler, and if you have any kind of food waste or, or anything on it, that's it. It immediately changes to what it was to now it's this. But you were talking about putting some signs up or something? So, somebody asked other signs there. Well, Byron has somebody that was coming to the dump that helped Byron make some signs. So I think they made some signs on a piece of paper. It's handwritten thing? I don't think it's handwritten, I think it's on a computer and it says newspapers or plastic or whatever for all those different compartments. And then they laminated it, okay, and before they laminated, they stuck small little magnets in the bottom of it, uh, and he sticks it there, but it's not, they don't hold on there very well, they're not very good.
And they don't, and they don't describe a lot, and this time of year, I mean, I, I, I've been taking my recycling there forever, and I didn't realize that, you know, my thirty-pack containers shouldn't be going in there, and I think it's just, this is where, this reinforces why we should have two people up there right now. Is in the summer, you've got a lot of tra, and, and there could easily, when, what was that young lad's name?
Go ahead, keep that, cause that should go to the dump.
Um, the young lad that used to work up there.
Miles.
Miles. When Miles was there, he was, the minute you drove in, he was down there at the recycling. And he would help you and, you know, and, and potentially tell you if something was going in there that shouldn't be. Which honestly, this time of year, that needs to happen, and I'll tell you, maybe it's just me because Byron knows me and I've been going there for years. You know, he doesn't bother to come around and, and tell me anything or look and see what I'm doing. Um, but if he did, you know, then he, he would know that my cardboard is, I've been throwing thirty-packs and I shouldn't be.
I've been down there and, you know, certain people are, you go down there to help them and they don't want your help.
They don't want you there.
Yeah, you know.
I loved it when Miles came down and helped me. I could be out of there in three minutes flat, and he always got a tip. But if you're not gonna show any interest, then-
Yeah, yeah.
Brett, uh, talking to Phil Reed, when you walked out, the cardboard, it's supposed to be corrugated cardboard, which, uh, the way, you know, there's a layer, a layer, and then you've got this weight part in the middle. And like your containers for like a thirty-pack of soda or whatever, that's garbage. And, because up, until I had that conversation with him, I thought that went into the cardboard, and it doesn't.
So what we discussed yesterday here, when we talked about this, is maybe going to Billy Gilroy on Signmakers and get some the magnetic signs that people put on the doors of their trucks, and you can get it any size. So go, go to the dump, measure what we can put on those containers, and get some signs made, and maybe a little bit more description on that sign, as Sandy's saying. I mean, and when it comes to newspaper, newspapers only should be pretty clear, but some of the other things, we might need a little bit of-
I was, I was thinking more of a stationary sign, like-
Had everything on it.
With a picture of the, um, dumpster itself, you know, this, this bins for, because the problem we have-
Well, they change those though, sometimes. I mean, traditionally, that front one is always the tin and the back one is always the glass, but the ones in between, they change those up sometimes, so it'd be hard to say-
Based off on a stationary sign that's not gonna be attached to the dumpster.
Right.
Because the problem is, I mean, we, we had magnetic signs made, but, you know, you forget to take them off and then-
They end up going to the transfer site.
Right, and they go down eighty-one, and the wind blows them off and so on.
You don't always get the same dumpsters back.
Yeah, I, I don't know about switching out bins, because they gotta, you know, rid them of how they, how they dump them.
Oh.
I'll have to ask Byron, that's a good question, because, like I said, I went up there Saturday morning and, you know, all the doors are closed. I don't know where any of the stuff goes, you know, people are asking me and I'm like, gee.
Well, to see what they're in there?
I'm not sure, you know, cause he used to have a, a drawing, but I couldn't find that, so the magnets were gone and, you know, you could see it just slightly scribbled on there.
Wow, like Sandy said, I agree with her, the real key to this thing is two people up there. And the second person that doesn't stay sitting there in the office.
Right.
Doing, doing what Miles did, or doing what Jerry or you guys do when you watch it. I mean, when you have one person there, you gotta deal with-
They're gonna start.
Garbage is number one.
Yeah, it has to be in.
When, when Miles was there, we left a mower up there and a weed whacker, and when there wasn't much going on, he was mowing, weed eating, picking, you know, picking the place up and-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, we've hired a guy and I'll, I'm gonna call him and, uh, you guys may be responsible for training him. I mean, we'll see.
Yeah.
Any idea of Byron coming back?
Oh, yeah, I-
So he's got the week off of the twenty-third?
I believe it's the twenty-third, Jerry said.
So that's, that's when he's having the hand surgery?
Yeah.
So that's on, you know, anyways, he's gonna be unavailable.
So ideally, we, if we could get, cause you don't want this guy showing up to work. If, if he were to give us two weeks' notice today, that's just about the time he'd be coming to work. So, if, ideally, if he could start on weekends.
Yeah.
Or a couple, two, three days at least, so that he could be with Byron a little bit.
Yeah, and, you know-
Before Byron goes on the surgery.
Byron was, has already scheduled the surgery, and we already talked to Jerry and Jay and Jamie, uh, that we're gonna take care of working that time, so we'll have, we definitely have some bodies that could be there that, these guys know what's going on up there too.
Really, besides, uh, recyclables.
Yeah.
We can, you know, we just gotta, we gotta figure out a system for recyclables.
So we've also come into a situation up there where the cardboard compactor has been, I've gotten phone calls on Thursday or Friday that, that it's full. Okay? And, uh, the, I can't call Waste Management on Thursday or Friday and say our cardboard thinks full, I mean, they, they're scheduled-
Right.
Out. It's happened to us twice now in the last month and a half. And we adjusted the warning light on it, cause there's a sensor in there, it kicks on a warning light. We readjusted that so that when it's three quarters, it, uh, it goes off, okay? And so we did that, and the other thing that they were doing is we changed the pickup on it, cause it's happened twice. So we changed the pickup, so just for now, they're picking that up every other week. They were picking it up once a month. And that's what we're doing, and we're gonna reevaluate that the third week in August. So. Somebody else is looking for it for two seconds. They're getting close. What's that?
I was gonna say, should, should we adjourn for work session?
That's right. Yeah. We, I'm just, I think we talked about everything on that.
And EDU, the clock, did you hook that? Cause the EDU is the only thing that we didn't-
Well, the other-
And I mean, I'd like to work on that today.
Good.
Okay.
I don't wanna adjourn and leave, but I'd like to work on some of that today, just so that we, even if we just get something started.
As a group here?
Yes.
I mean, I have a dentist appointment at eleven.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, I would love to miss it, but I can't.
What's that?
I have a dentist appointment. So where are we at? We're, uh, that's just giving you an update where we're at with the dump. And I think this other employee will help us a lot with a lot of our problems. Okay?
Okay, so we wanna adjourn this meeting into a workshop for the watering sewer. And he's gotta be out of here by eleven, so we'll just say that it's gonna be, it's gonna be a short one, um, for thirty minutes or forty-five minutes. Where's your dentist?
Over clay.
Oh, so thirty minutes, we got thirty minutes, and I just wanna, I, I would like to go over a few things, just, even if we get a few districts.
Need a motion to adjourn? So we're gonna adjourn this till Thursday morning at? Nine o'clock? Nine o'clock?
Yeah, we're gonna-
At nine o'clock.
Thirty minutes today.
We're gonna adjourn to a workshop, but to, we also gotta say that we're adjourning to Thursday morning at nine o'clock.
Okay.
Motion to do that. By Mike, second by Sandy, all those in favor, aye. We also now need a motion to adjourn this meeting right now into a workshop for the EDU.
Thought that's what you were just doing.
I thought you just did that, yeah.
Well, he adjourned it till then, but-
They don't, they're just gonna open a workshop. Workshop is something totally- Yeah. So this meeting is over, right?
Yeah, thirty minutes today?
Yeah, we're just, it might-